The word of the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, June twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty. Roll call Jake.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Jim Morrison.
Here.
Paul Disney.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Dan Ormsby.
Here.
Kathy Downs.
Here.
Ed Rankin.
Here.
Item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any. Item four is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have town council minutes from six eleven, two thousand and twenty.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Jake.
Mark Eastman.
Approve.
Jim Morrison.
Approved.
Paul Disney.
Approve.
Peter Stewart.
Approve.
Approve.
Kathy Downs.
Approve.
Ed Rankin.
Approve.
Item five is review correspondence. We have two police calls. One on six three twenty to the Knopf's Cotton Arrows Bridge and on six seventeen twenty to run around to assist the ambulance. Director Gag, anything on those we need to know about other than what the report state?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there is not. Uh, just for the record, you can't see them, but I have DC Winchester, DC Denning, and Rich Rotella here this evening.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those from anybody? Item six is ordinance to consider introduce. Uh, we don't have any. Item seven, discussion items. First is the pool update. Sue.
I'm pleased to report that the pool repairs are going very well. Um, anyone who's been by might have noticed that there was some water in the pool. The purpose of water in the pool was to determine if water was going to stay in the pool without going anywhere else, and I'm pleased to report that it is staying where it's supposed to be. The steps that, um, Wardwell has taken to address the gap at the base of the big wall, um, with the lack of um, the membrane and any um, concrete to keep it from just going out through has been replaced. Um, and the return lines, another good thing, have also been, uh, tested, and there was only one that that had a problem, and that has been addressed. So Wardwell, um, I haven't talked to, um, former Mayor Keen has been pretty much on site with the contractor of the deal at the time, um, helping out, and, um, I I haven't talked to him today, but, uh, he had indicated that Wardwell should be completed this week and that, um, Mike from Mike's Pool Service would be doing, um, this, the sandblasting of the, that wall and the smoothing out of the bumps and lumps that it currently has, um, with concrete, and then applying an epoxy-based paint which has a life of eight or more years as opposed to what was last used on that was tennis court paint, and it, it's not made to be underwater all the time. So the epoxy-based paint will do a better job of sealing, and it will have a better longevity on the pool. And so he'll be, um, sandblasting, repairing, painting that, eh, doing the epoxy paint and painting the entire pool and the pool surround, and replacing the filter media and the sand filter, um, which Wardwell is, is vacuuming out, and he'll, he will be checking out those lines and replacing that media and, um, also the surge tank that's at that facility, um, requires some to go down into that tank and uh, Mikes will be replumbing that so that the closing and opening the pool can now all be done from up, from, without having to go down into the tank and it make it a much easier and safer, um, process. And as I said, he will be starting right after Wardwell finishes, and we're still looking to be on target to have the pool open by mid-July.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for Sue on this? So I I'm gonna ask, um, is our number and email address up on the screen, do you know?
Um, I would have to ask Dylan who is downstairs, um, handling that part. I did turn on closed captioning so that
Okay.
people could see what, because I've had a couple of emails from people who said that they, they liked watching, but they, they couldn't, their hearing wasn't good enough, and so if it was closed captioned, so we've been, I've been trying to do that for these meetings, but I will check with Dylan and see if the, um, if that is up, if you can give me just a minute to go make sure that is.
And we just have the public hearing, we just have the public hearings coming up. I'd like to make sure that folks have an opportunity.
Hold on. Thank you. It's, uh, I didn't have to go anywhere. He came on.
Thank you. Um, next item is the Spirit of America nomination discussion. I know we have a couple nominations that are, that have been submitted.
We had two that were in your packet, and then we had a third one that came in that was sort of a associated with another, I, they weren't together, but they named a person, the same person was named in two of them, but two other entities were also mentioned and along with that person, another one, but those are the ones that I've received from counselors and from, um, the general public.
Discussion? So I know we have, uh, um, Brooke Minner and also Dawn Houghton are the two, I believe, we have Sue, is that correct?
Well, one, um, Jerry Spooner had nominated the Enterprise and Dawn and Sandy. And Counselor Morrison had nominated Dawn, and, um, Steve Feig had nominated Brooke. So, you know, there's like three, one, one, I guess.
Any, uh, if there's no discussion, any, uh, thoughts on sending somebody or, or somebody forward for this?
Are you looking for a motion, Pete, or?
I, I think we ought to have some consensus on, uh, who we want to nominate, so yes, I would take a motion.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to nominate, uh, both Dawn and Sandy. I think they've done a phenomenal job for quite some time, and at times it can feel like a thankless job, I'm sure. But they've been in the community, they've gone through the, the virus and, and hung in there, um, and it's a small business, and, and I just think that they deserve to be recognized for that.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Uh, any further conversation?
Uh, I was the one that nominated, uh, just Dawn. I think I would, I would just assume see it go to Dawn and Sandy.
Thanks, Jim. All right, uh, we have a nomination in a second. I don't have any further. Um, Jake, you go around the table real quick for us?
Mark Eastman.
Approve.
Jim Morrison.
Approve.
Paul Disney.
Approve.
Peter Stewart.
Approve.
Dan Ormsby.
Approve.
Kathy Downs.
Approve.
Ed Rankin.
Approve.
There, there we go. Thank, and thanks, uh, Jim for putting that nomination in, um, and, and, uh, bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, the next item is the July four, uh, July fourteenth election guidelines. Jake.
Yeah, you all had in your packet, uh, policy that, um, I had outlined, uh, for you to look at. I don't really think we need to go over it line by line, but, um, the election, in-person election is, uh, voting is going to look quite a bit different than it has in the years past. Um, mainly because we have to establish a one-way foot traffic pattern. Um, so by doing that, voters are gonna enter into the, where the main office is of the Jewish school, uh, go in through that way, go into the entrance of the gymnasium that they usually do, exit through the side door, and then exit through the door that voters usually enter into. Um, and so that's really gonna be the biggest thing that voters are gonna see different. Um, you can see some of the steps that we're taking in the, uh, in the, the guidelines that I had outlined, so if you have any questions, certainly be, uh, happy to answer them. This is nothing that you guys need to vote on. It's just for your information and for the public's information.
Any questions or? Are you getting any, uh, takers, Jake, for, uh, workers?
We have had, uh, I would say we have five new, new, uh, ballot clerks, five people who uh, have, uh, volunteered or have called in and expressed interest. So that's really good. That's, uh, I'm, I'm really happy about.
So was this a replacement of folks that couldn't do it or, or weren't, didn't, weren't willing to do it, or is this additional staff to help with the new?
Well, we have, there are three new positions that we have to have for this election. We have to have a person outside at the entrance, person at, outside at the exit, and we also need to have a clerk simply to disinfect the pens and all of the boating boats. That's gonna be their, their one job is to do that, so, um, we needed three additional people, but, um, we also had, uh, some of our election clerks weren't willing to work this election, you know, understandably so.
So is, i- is the five enough for what you need?
I'm sorry, Jim?
You, you said you had five volunteers. Is that enough of what you need? Or do you need additional people?
I'm hoping we get maybe two more.
Thank you.
Sue?
Jacob, did you count Dan in that? List. My husband said that he would, um,
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So hopefully with your plea here on public access television, we can get some more, uh, some more.
We're, we would be fine if we didn't get the two additional, uh, just the, if we get two more, that will be, uh, less time that some of the other clerks will have to work, so.
Yep.
Just nice.
Well, good luck to you, Jake.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
We've had, uh, three hundred and almost forty absentee ballots so far, so that is a whole lot more than any other primary in, uh, in a few years, so maybe that will be an indication as to how our in-person voting will go.
Okay. Um, item eight is agenda items. We will skip those until we get to the public hearing section because they all correspond to the public hearings that we need to hold first in order to act on the resolves. So we will have the public hearings when we get down there, then come back and act on the resolves. Um, item nine is, uh, elections, and we have a, an election warrant for the July fourteenth election. Um, so you, how many, do you need all signatures or just four again?
We just need four to make it valid, and Counselor Morrison has indicated he'll sign it right after the meeting, so I really just need three additional people who can find time to commit it.
I can come down right after the meeting.
Okay, that would be great.
I could too, Sue. I won't be available in the morning, but I could come down tonight.
But I can wait, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
This doesn't need to be done tomorrow anyway, correct? We've got, can we wait until Monday to finish this or? If we didn't, if we didn't have the signatures?
Monday would be fine.
Okay.
If everyone wants to just come in Monday, that, is that okay?
Yep.
I can do Monday.
I'll just have it at the front office Monday.
Okay.
Jim's tonight, because he's already here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, item ten is, uh, quick claims, deeds, and discharges. I don't believe we have any. Item eleven is the town manager report.
Uh, the home meal delivery program, three days a week, continues to be well-used last Friday, and I'm not sure if this week broke it, but last Friday was the highest delivery day so far with a hundred and forty-seven meals delivered. I cannot find words to express my thanks to RSU twenty-five and their kitchen staff for the meal preparation, to Bill Foster for coordinating the program and doing a significant number of deliveries, the loyal volunteer drivers, and of course, Colleen, who takes every call for, um, meal ordering. It's really quite a process. The town office will be closing at two PM on Tuesday, June thirtieth, to allow staff to complete fiscal year-end closure before we open the doors at seven thirty on July first. It is advertised in the enterprise, posted on the doors of the office, and also posted on the town's website. We do this every year. And we've already talked about the need for election workers, um. The Y is rolling out their summer sports clinic sessions for baseball, football, basketball, and soccer. There are protocols and guidelines that will be implemented. Dates are July thirteenth through August twentieth, on Monday through Thursdays, and the age group is K to eight, except for football, which is grade three to eight. Each age group will have their own sessions in each sport on the days listed for seventy-five minutes each day. It will be limited to eight kids per group with two or three coaches there for instruction and guidance and making sure that all are following guidelines. And you can call the Bucksport Y office at four six nine three five one eight for more information. And finally, I want to say a big thank you to my staff for holding the fort for the past two days while I have been helping out my son with childcare issues. It is indeed a blessing to be able to be out of the office and know that all will continue to run smoothly on all fronts.
Thanks. Any questions for Sue? All right, um, our next item is item twelve, public hearings. Um, we have a couple. And I will go right down through the list that we have. So I will open the public hearing. Uh, for appendix B, council rules amendment to add to section forty-six is for manager of town council email correspondence. And, uh, quickly what it says, "In an effort to provide transparency for the public, all email correspondence with the exception of legal matters that are considered confidential information between the town manager and the town council shall be posted weekly on the town of Bucksport website." Public hearing for this is open. I know we've had a couple comments, Sue, um, previous from email. Do we have anything new from the public on this?
I, I will check right now, but we did not, um, we haven't had any that you have, haven't been sent to you, which is, um, we're prior to this.
Okay.
Hearing.
Well, Sue was checking from that. Any, uh, counselor comments?
I do. Um, if you recall, I had spoke on the, at the May twenty-eighth meeting in regards to this. Um, I had spoke that we already have in place the freedom of access, and anybody can request this information at any time. I just think we had, we had received, um, an email from a citizen that I had sent to everybody, and his, his email, um, if you would like me to go over that again, I can, but he was just saying that he would not only want emails from the town, uh, manager and counselors, he would like to see all emails from the town clerk, plus they want phone logs, they want correspondence, uh, bed process to be opened in public, um, forum, uh, keep log books of phone calls and business discussions, um, between the CEO, which is Code Enforcement Officer, Economic Development Director, and, um, I just think it's kind of opened up a, a lot of areas for more information to be posted on the website, which would be, um, an absolute amount of work for whomever's posting, whether it's Sue or Rich or whomever, when if anybody would like the information, they can just request it through the freedom of access. So I'm not in favor of adding this to the appendix B, but that's just my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Yep. Anybody else have any comments?
I, I agree with Kathy that it's just adding someone more work. I don't think it's necessary.
Anybody else?
I guess the only thing I'd add is there's a distinction between, uh, town employees and elected officials. That was the only reason for even bringing it forward, that transparency side of it.
Do you have anything else? Sue, anything from the public that you've received on this before I close this public hearing?
There's, there's not, no calls and no emails.
All right. Seeing nothing else, I will close the public hearing on the first matter. And.
That, that public hearing, um, would be followed by a vote right then. That's not, we don't do ordinances by resolve.
Correct. Uh, that's where I was, I was headed there.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. So we have the, uh, public hearing for the, um, addition to the, um, ordinance rules. Jake, around the table? And, and, and an affirmative vote is to add these rules, um, to our ordinance. Is that correct?
Somebody would have to make a motion.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to, to add it, to add this to, so. Go ahead, Jake.
Mark Eastman.
Approve.
Jim Morrison.
No.
Paul Disney.
Opposed.
Uh, Peter Stewart.
No.
Dan Ormsby.
No.
Kathy Downs.
Oppose.
Ed Rankin.
Oppose.
Motion doesn't hear.
I will now open up the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-one general fund, Marina, capital improvement, and sewer budgets. There was a, um, a change, Sue, correct, on the Marina budget, just it didn't affect the bottom line, it just affected the number in the resolve, correct?
That's right. The, the intro paragraph for the revenues and expenses hadn't been updated from the prior year, but the, the numbers in the body of the revenues and expenses, the entire list, were correct. I amended that and reposted so that the correct ones were.
And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to see that, so. Um, any public comment from the public on?
We just had a call that, when I answered, I didn't get anybody, but, um, if they wanted to call back, if it's something in regard to the budget, they could try again, um.
Yep. Um, anything from the council on the budget?
I have a quick comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ed.
Um, I know town manager Lassard has brought this up a couple times. I just want to reinforce to the people that any capital improvements, um, they're, they're gonna, they're in the budget because we need to prepare for them in case they're approved, but they're a line item. They come as we they have to be approved as we go. That's what I want to make clear to everybody, that we're not saying thumbs up on everything, just we need to prepare for it in case it happens.
That's correct. E- e- each item in the capital improvement needs to be acted on independently, um, when it comes forward. You are correct. That, that money is just a set aside for the possibility of those projects, um, being done, but we will have to act on each one of those. Any other comments on the two thousand and twenty-one general fund, Marina, capital improvement, and sewer budgets?
Uh, I, I was down this week and, uh, took a look at the situation at the Marina. Uh, some of those floats, the, the docks, I don't know what you call them, the slips, uh, some of them are really getting in, in need of repair, and we've only allotted, uh, ten thousand dollars toward that this year. And I was told that it costs about twenty-five hundred dollars each to replace those. And, uh, if you look at them and consider the fact that these people are paying good money to bring some, some nice craft in there to, uh, pull into the slips, uh, I think we probably should be approaching that with a little more money maybe in the next budget or or if it, if possible, to put a little more in there this time. Uh, there's really some need down there, and, and the new one that they put up there is great, and the rest of the people are looking at this new one sitting there and, you know, I, I just feel like something should, should be done about that.
Rich, you have any comments on that? Or any insight, I should say? You gotta unmute yourself first.
Thank you. Guys, thank you for visiting us, Counselor Morrison. Um, what we have done was to make sure that the crew would be able to, uh, do the floats, and at the time, what would be said through hearing out, uh, if we'd be able to do it in-house, but we would have to send it out of house, uh, without having to get a loan from the town to make this happen. We were able to make it work this year, and we're gonna come in forty thousand dollars under budget in our expenses this year, and that's with building four new floats. Uh, basically what we did is we, uh, took from other lines where we weren't going to reach those figures out. We could come to the town and ask for a loan to have more of that happen. We have a staff three with limited, with limited season, so, um, I, I will get with the staff and see what, how much we realistically we, we can accomplish this.
And part of your suggestion, Jim, is if not this year, look, definitely look for, for the next, um, next boating season?
Yes, it's something that could be taken care of in the, in the winter season. They could, they could be, uh, producing these new, uh, slips for that, and, uh, it definitely would, would be a good incentive for people that want to come here and bring their boats to, uh, see some, uh, a few of them in a little better shape. They, they maintain them well. I'm not saying that they're not maintained, just that their, their resources are limited. Those are old, they just need to be replaced.
Fair enough. Sue?
Um, the, the Marina is, is not funded through the use of tax dollars. It's funded in, or it has been traditionally funded entirely through revenues from the users of that system. There is some amount of, uh, money in reserve that be from, um, not having expended all of their budgets annually, which they traditionally don't. So there's some money built up there. When, what, um, our economic development director, Rich, was talking about is there was some discussion of mine staff about the idea of, um, asking the council for a loan from the general fund to the Marina to replace, uh, some of those floats to be repaid annually through the excess on the budget that comes in from Marina funds only. Um, but they were able this year to do the work through the regular budget without making that request, and, um, so they, there will be more discussions on how to do this so that, um, remainder of these can be replaced, even if it's a two-year replacement schedule or, or something like that. It, it was that the plan was never to try and do it all in one year because that would overwhelm it, but if we even did it over the next two years, that would be, um, significant.
So I think it's a
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's a good idea to, um, keep this as a placeholder, Jim, and, and, and make sure that we address this before, uh, before time runs out over the winter.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I had a quick question for, uh, Rich Rotella.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I saw that the fishing dock, the fishing floats went back in, um. I, I didn't, I, it's my own fault. I didn't go back and look at that meeting, but I thought we were not gonna do that this year. I thought we were looking at m- making a better system from a land-based pier, or was that next year?
That's the next year's capital improvement. Uh, so we were able to get the float out at, we had a diver this year who was actually able to help us well. Everything is safe. We found anchors, we found anchors that had been missing for quite some time. It's the first time we had a diver that end of the water run. With all the trouble we had last year and the delays we had this year, and, and the fishing pier has been packed every single night. With all the trouble we had last year and the delays we had this year, and, and the fishing pier has been packed every single night. And they're actually catching strike this off this year, but yes, we do have a capital improvement and I do plan to come to the council the very first meeting in July. So we can get that project started.
And that's for the, the land base extending that pier?
Yes, that, that's correct, we'd have to add a couple more dolphins to get over the top of the water, uh make it sea shape and it would be a year-round. Land-based pier. The, the pier itself needs to be completely replaced and the docks themselves are over twenty years old as well, so they. Whichever way we decide to go, it's gonna cost roughly the same amount of money, cause everything needs to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else from anybody on any parts of the budget here? Do you have anything Sue from the public?
I, I have nothing.
Okay. We will close this public hearing on the twenty twenty one general fund Marina capital improvement and sewer budget. Um, the next public hearing, I will open to set the sewer rates for the twenty twenty one fiscal year. There is no increase, um, no proposed increase for the uh sewer rates is, is what we're, we're deciding on. Any comments from any of the counselors? Anything from the public Sue on the sewer rates? I don't believe we've received any correspondence on any of the budget stuff either throughout that we would have received anyway, correct?
No.
Sue, how many years have those rates stayed the same?
Since two thousand fifteen. In uh. July of two thousand fifteen. Uh, the town. Almost doubled its sewer rate in order to accommodate the construction. Um, and ongoing operational cost of the. The secondary treatment facility. Over and above what the primary treatment facility costs. And since that time, construction's been completed, um. We, we've gotten more users on the system, which is the only thing that can eventually hopefully bring rates down. Is we have a significant number of new users on the system, some of which are fairly. You know, our, our revenue stream from that is, is increasing almost twenty thousand dollars a quarter, which is. Helps to absorb increases in budget that would otherwise have to have been. Offset by a rate increase to the sewer user. But the more users we get, the less likely that is gonna happen. So between the increased users and what we're now seeing in a reduction. Um, in the solar arrays, um, the month of May alone, the difference in. In dollars and cents over the prior May was almost fifteen hundred dollars lower on the electric bill. I mean that. That makes a significant difference over time also, so, no, there's not been, there's not been a. Increase in the sewer rates since fifteen and. There's not been an increase in the mill rate since fifteen, in fifteen it went to seventeen ten. For the next three years it went down and then it's been the same for the past two years at sixteen thirty.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the sewer rate? Alright, I will close that public hearing. We'll now go back to agenda items, item eight. Uh, A is to approve resolve twenty twenty fifty-eight to adopt the town general fund budget for the period July first twenty twenty. Through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Jake around the table?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Al Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Item B is to approve resolve twenty twenty fifty-nine to adopt the capital improvement plan. For the period July first twenty twenty through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, Jake?
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Al Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Item C is to approve resolve twenty twenty dash sixty to adopt the sewer budget for the period July first twenty twenty. Through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
I make a motion. To approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Jake?
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Al Bissinett?
Hit the wrong button, sorry, approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Item D to approve resolve twenty twenty sixty-one to set sewer rates for the period July first twenty twenty. Through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Jake?
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Al Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Item E is to approve resolve twenty twenty sixty-two. To adopt the town Marina operating budget for the period July first twenty twenty through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second, Jake?
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Al Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
Item F is to approve resolve twenty twenty sixty-three to set the date when taxes are due and payable. Um, our resolve says that the town council assembled that taxes for the period seven one twenty twenty to six thirty. Twenty twenty-one are due and payable on July first twenty twenty. Anything else on that Sue?
Yeah, that, we established that as the due date, but the um, the dates for payment. For interest accrue is the last of August and the last of March. Yes, that, it, it.
That was my question.
July one date is the date when they're due and payable, it starts that. Bucksport traditionally commits taxes effective the beginning of July and. That's why, what makes it the due date, but the, the payment dates to avoid interest are for the first half of taxes are. The end of August for the first half and the end of March for the second.
I just wanted to make sure that people understood we are not changing due dates, we. Just the way the resolve is written, so. Can I get a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Jake?
Mark Eastman?
Approve.
Jim Morrison?
Approve.
Al Bissinett?
Approve.
Peter Stewart?
Approve.
Dan Ormsby?
Approve.
Kathy Downs?
Approve.
Ed Rankin?
Approve.
I'd like to um thank all the department heads, the town manager and, and, and the council members for uh working through the budget process. There's a lot of time and effort that, that a lot of folks put in and uh, I think we've uh come up with a, with a good plan for the town to. Maintain hopefully our fiscal responsibility and to still um have a full service community, so I want to thank everybody for uh, for all the hard work that they've done. Um, item thirteen is discussion items not on the agenda for the council and the public. Danny, do you have something else?
Nope.
Yep, I'm just gonna go over to the public real quick to see if there's anything out there and give them the opportunity if they want to call in. Um, I see Rich standing up like he has something to say, so.
Hi, thank you, uh, just a couple of quick updates, uh, this past Saturday, the House Restaurant celebrated forty years of business on Main Street in Bucksport. Uh, towards opening doors June twentieth of nineteen eighty. Uh, we put a nice little banner up on the archy Almo to commemorate, uh, trying to do something special at a council meeting, unfortunately we're. Still not public, so we'll uh try to do something when we get back together for him. Uh, also, the last restaurant in town will be open to the public, Roma Wine and Design opens tomorrow. Uh, they'll be open at four P M, they'll be taking reservations, no parties greater than eight following uh C D C guidelines. Um, and also the Friars Brew House, uh, Capital Restaurant Bakery will have a Fourth of July celebration. They'll have the lobster roll core feast, which is green head lobster roll, lobsterated chips. Whoopee pie and bottomless lemonade, iced tea are on the counter for only twenty-six dollars. They will be open on the Fourth of July, which is a Saturday, from eleven A M until four P M. You can dine in or eat at the Hartland. Thank you, I think it's all businesses, uh, everyone's doing a great job, um, following guidelines the best they can. Stay open and service our citizens, everyone has seen me eating on the waterfront. Our trash pickup is roughly two to three times a week, we're at seven days a week on trash pickup on the waterfront currently. And the waterfront staff is doing a fantastic job. Uh, one request I do have for the public, I did catch somebody today who let their dog go to a bathroom and decided to walk off. And I turned it down and asked her to pick it up, we're seeing an increase in dog. On the waterfront again, please, please help us maintain the waterfront pickup after your house, thank you.
Thanks Rich. Um, counselors, Danny, do you have something?
Um, I just want to take a minute and um to say a few thank yous for um. Well, I guess, I'm a, I'm a proud graduate of Bucksport in two thousand, um, and now my daughter's a proud graduate of twenty twenty. Um, the graduation ceremony, um, the, the, the administration staff at R S B twenty-five. Um, with Josh Tripp and um Superintendent Boothby, the police, the fire. Um, i- it was amazing and, and all the people that, that um put that on. Uh, it was formal, it was organized, it was special. Um, and it was something that I know that my daughter will always remember it, will always remember it. Um, and especially the, the, the second part of it, coming down through town. The, the businesses and the people that lines, you know, with the balloons and signs and, and, you know, I. I, I, I told Josh Tripp that, you know, she should do that every year. I mean, it was just so amazing coming down through and seeing the whole town out there waving and clapping and. Um, and just the organization of that and the presentation of it was spectacular and, and so I really appreciate that. And I know that our police and fire had a big part of that too, um, so thank you for that.
Thanks Danny. Anybody else on the council have anything that wasn't on the agenda?
Yeah, I have a quick comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead Ed.
Um. I, I'll just uh. Second what Dan just said, everybody involved did a great job, it was pretty impressive to see under the circumstance. To at least give something to the seniors that well deserved. Um, and I also have been talking to several people that have come up to me and. I, I kind of share their belief on. Where are we, where are we at with the, the whole fiberite deal and. A lot of concerns of why in two thousand twenty we're putting landfill. Garbage in the landfill, it shouldn't even be a thing in this day and age. But um, I'm getting a lot of feedback about. What's going on there and. The consensus that I'm seeing, and I'd have to agree with it, the only landfill in today's day and age should be ash. Not anything but ash, but. So I, I don't know, I know Sue, you're on the, the state committee. Is there anything being said that? I mean, cause in my mind, cause I don't know everything that's going on on the state level, but in my mind, it almost seems like. Perk and fiberite could almost work together and help each other, but. I know there's a looming contract of an outside vendor that may be preventing that, but is there any? Thing good on the horizon we're seeing?
Um. I guess you have to define good, but, but the, for me, the good part is that the state is. Um, not going to allow landfilling to be the ongoing solution. While fiberite reorganizes, the um. And that, I, I will tell you that fiberite and perk have tried to have an agreement. In, in the past before this ever went downhill in order to do bypass through perk instead of. But um. Norwich Walk, um, Waste Management, which is the contract that. The, that fiberite has for bypass waste would not allow them. To send waste to another facility according to their contract. And that's, that's why that fell apart, it was because contractually Waste Management. And fiberite was required to get a bypass contract for waste. When they first submitted an application for this process and at the time. Um, the M R C and Perk were at war, they were getting a divorce and they were at war, so that left two options. One was Juniper Ridge, one was um Waste Management. Uh. Waste Management is the one they got, but. The uh. I, I do serve on the B E P and we wrestle. All the time with the idea of the amount of uh. Waste that's, solid waste that's going into Juniper Ridge, uh, the, the state-owned landfill. And there's a lot of locations that it comes from, much of it from Southern Maine and what used to go to. Maine Energy in Bitterford was allowed to uh go to. Juniper Ridge on a limited number of years, but those, that deadline passed years ago, but because there's not. Another facility and the vendor with the contract to manage Juniper Ridge landfill. Controls much of the waste in the eastern and much of Maine. And that is directed um. At the landfill, um, they provide some to Perk, some to fiberite, but. It's a, it's an issue that the state will have to deal with now that we're at this juncture in terms of. Um, contractual obligation or not, they're not going to. Uh, allow bypass to be something that's an ongoing. Event, but in two thousand nineteen, the definition of waste bypass was changed to add the word temporary. Prior to that bypass, you, you almost could, bypass could be happen every twelve minutes, but. It's now has to be, it's temporary and, and Dave Burns from, who's the head of solid waste. And the state has said that they will not be allowing this to go on past this thirty-day. Um. Pure, pure default that the M R C has with fiberite right now, um. Unless there is some definitive. Uh, option that's gonna happen within a short period of time after that, so. Um, what would really be good if we could do is schedule either a committee meeting or. A meeting where we could. I could get you more information from the state itself, I'm just repeating to you what I've been told because I have been. Following this very closely, the, the. The truth is that Perk has been in a precarious situation as well for different reasons and so. Much of it because of waste control by an entity that. Doesn't necessarily send it there because it's more expensive to do it than it is to landfill it. But, uh, I, I think it would be good and, and this, certainly the public's interested in this. This would be a meeting where the public would be. It might be a meeting that maybe we could have at the Performing Arts Center when Jim Morrell is back and we can have social distancing and still have people be able to be in the same room. It's kind of, this is kind of awkward. I feel like I'm talking too much, but I'm just trying to explain that the, uh, there are a lot of different issues here, um, some related to Fiberite, some related to state law and what the, what waste is defined at, whether it's main waste or out of state waste, um, a lot of what goes into Juniper Ridge landfill, um, comes from a facility in Lewiston, um, Reenergy, which ninety percent of what they take in is out of state, um, oversized bulky waste and they grind some, they make some into fines and it's used as cover at the landfill. And the, the rest of it primarily is used as a, as an absorbent to sludge disposal. And the state has allowed that at a higher rate than normal because of the whole PFAS sludge issue where sludge is no longer being land-sprayed, it's being land-filled. So, yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, I, what I was gonna suggest Sue is how about if we look at the July twenty-third meeting? Um, to set up, up at the, um, Performing Arts Center and, and, and have this at, at, at six o'clock as a committee of the whole or as a, as a, as a, as a committee meeting at six, which would then allow us to then carry on our regular meeting at seven, if, but if we had more folks in there that wanted to show up just for the, for the, um, waste part of it.
And we'll also know by that time.
That's the other part of it, correct?
What the next steps are gonna be here that are, are options for the town to consider.
Will Jim be available by the twenty-third of July?
Yes, I believe he's supposed to be back July fourteenth or July, the middle of July.
So, so if we can, let, let, let's plan on that July twenty-third at a six o'clock up there for, 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 for nothing more than this, um, which we may get some, some public input, but then we can allow us to then continue on with a, with a regular council meeting at seven and start tying up two times, if that works for folks. You know, we can set it up here in the next second too.
Sure. Thank you, Sue.
May, may I ask, uh, nothing in our contract uh, left us a, a, in a position where we could opt out of them at, at any time. I mean, they're, they're not fulfilling the obligation that that we contracted with them to do. Uh, and, but we don't have any recourse, no legal recourse that we can get away from them and, and go to Perk on our own?
Part of that, Jim, is the thirty day period that, 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 that hasn't, hasn't, hasn't gone through its whole process yet. And that's gonna allow them, the way I understand it, and Sue correct me if I'm wrong, that's gonna allow Fiberite to try to get their ducks in a row. And then see what their answer is going to be. So there is a thirty day process and then after that, I think then we can have the option to see what our options are.
Yeah, the Municipal Review Committee has intervened with Fiberite, um, and issued that notice of default on the contract. Um, and there, there's a thirty day period to cure find investors, do what, but at the end of that, the, our contract, we're, we are still having our waste disposed of at the same rate that we, that we, uh, contracted for. And they are operating within the, the agreement because it's, it's in a state of bypass right now. When it's moves out of that thing after this thirty day period, then the town has a different different options, but the other thing we have to talk about, and this would be why our, our meeting is necessary, is that Perk has its own set of issues that are are not, they, they've been struggling also for different reasons. Um, I have had conversations with the state about that as well as, um, officials from other communities who utilize Perk who have expressed concern because they were Perk was having issues so that the best result is that if both Perk and Fiberite remain healthy because if either one go down, no matter who's left, there's gonna be an increase in landfilling from someplace. So, um, if, our options will change after that thirty day period, but not until then. We, we aren't sending our recyclables there. Our, if you remember, we contracted with them because it was a much lower rate, but there was, there's no part of that contract that said where the, where they go if they aren't accepting them. So I've been sent, those have been going to Perk. So we've been utilizing what we could out of that. But contractually, we can't do that with solid waste until we get by this cure period. Not without, not without, uh, creating potential legal issues that we won't have if we wait to get to the end of that period.
Our, our contract is with M R C, correct?
Our contract is with part of it is through the M R C, but the, the vendor that they, that is named in that contract is Coastal or Fiberite.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items that were not on the agenda for discussion? As, as a side, um, I talked to the town manager and the deputy mayor. I will not be available for the July ninth meeting. So, uh, Paul will be running that one. Um, item fourteen is upcoming public hearings and committee assignments. Um, we could set that committee assignment today. Um, even though you guys, there will be another meeting on the ninth, but I think, um, is everybody in agreement on the twenty-third that we can at least start the ball rolling on that to, to, to meet in person at the, um, at the Performing Arts Center at six to discuss, uh, solid waste and then, uh, have our regular council meeting at seven?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, um, again, uh, please make sure that, uh, if you had a chance, if you, you make sure that you exercise and, and vote. Um, absentee ballots are still open until when, Jake?
People can actually request to vote absentee at the town office on election day, up until election day. It's different than usual.
There you go. All right.
One question. Did, did we vote on appendix B?
We did and it, and it was not passed.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks. I missed it.
That's all right. Item fifteen is adjournment.
Does Director Gagin have something to say?
Oh, I didn't even see him stand up there. Director Gagin, sorry, go ahead. Turn your mic on so I can hear you.
I can't hear you.
I know, I'm, no, I'm good.
You're just waiting, you're just waiting to turn it off, right?
Just waiting to leave the meeting, but thank you.
I think a motion and a second for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. We all wanna raise our hand to save Jake the have a great night and again, thanks everybody for, uh, for all your hard work. Good night. All right, see you later.
Have a good night.
Good night.